I call the meeting to order, everybody please rise. The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Bubulovich.
Here.
Mr. Schoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seen none?
You always bring that so quickly. Let me give you a chance!
You gotta be quick. You gotta be quick. How's everybody doing this evening?
Well.
Good, good, thank you.
Punchy.
I know, a little bit, right? A tiny bit. It's been a little while since we've all been together.
Been a couple of weeks, yes.
I know. We've missed each other. So, we apologize for starting late, but I guess in the interest of not seeing each other in a month, it ran a little bit over, so we apologize. Um, committee reports. What's everybody been up to?
I went to South End FSA meeting, um, was it last week? I think it was last week.
Yes, what last week?
And, um, so, yeah, it was a great meeting. They have so much going on there, a lot of good stuff going on, and I just kept them up to date on all that's going on on our side of the house, so, it was nice.
Fantastic. I attended the middle school FSA meeting last week. Mr. Chill was there. They talked about how they have their windows for conferences, and the window, I think, is closing today. They had a presentation, "You Don't Know Me Until You Know Me," and it was apparently very well received, and it was all about, you know, not being so quick to judge and kindness, which is obviously a recurring theme. The Treps kickoff for the 5th graders is today, was today, which is exciting, and they're having a cultural arts assembly on December 21st with a junk band, so, fun times. Hmm, mhm. Uh, let's see, what else? And, what else? Oh, some of us attended the New Jersey School Boards Conference in Atlantic City.
Thank you guys for going.
Yes, we missed you, by the way.
You did.
So...
Hopefully next year, again.
Very fun time, fun bonding experience.
It was good.
Lots learned, that's all I really have to say, in all honesty, so...
And our two schools are now...
Yes, two schools, future ready, so now that's all four.
All four.
We're very excited. We understand that the next level is like silver or something like that, right? Somebody's working on that?
Silver.
Silver.
Are we working on that?
I figured, right?
Aren't some of you already done?
Right.
Well, some of them could've.
I bet Mr. Manio's like already on it.
Some are already finished with their silver.
He's supposed to be in dungeon, so I have hopes, so... So, anyway, it was fun, and we had two new banners.
Yes.
We're very excited, and we appreciate everybody who came down for the day and joined us. So, alright, moving on, um, we have our two board presentations. Are they in this order, or...
They are.
Okay, so...
Oh, wanna get...
Oh, yes, Nick, yes.
I'm in a rush today, so...
Oh!
Alright, be careful what you say there, Nick.
Is Nick a rush or isn't in a rush?
Stick around.
He's not. He's not in a rush.
Shouldn't he give us an update first?
He's guaranteed you next time he will be in a rush.
And then he can stick around and see if he wants to, or...
That'd be great.
Okay, well, while everybody's giving updates, why don't you go, and then if you decide you need to slip out, you can slip out. How about that?
So, for a short month at the high school, there was quite a bit going on. So, this month, the Asian Club has established themselves at the high school, and they're exploring Asian culture, and they're kind of a haven for Asian students at the high school, and Mr. Gallagher is the advisor of the club. On November 5th, the National Honor Society began the school-wide food drive for Tony's Kitchen in Montclair. The NHS got all the clubs involved, and they're collecting donations until the 16th, and I have a flyer in case anyone wants to look at, um, the different items that they want donated. On November 6th, motivational speaker Scott Chesney gave a presentation to the freshmen on the power of choice and the powers they have to shape not only their high school career, but also their whole lives. On November 9th, the football team had its last football game against Shabazz, and many students from the high school took a bus to Shabazz to cheer on our team. Though we lost, we were able to end the winning streak with an impressive win earlier in the season. On November 9th, and then on November 18th, music student Peter Corso performed in the prestigious All-State Chorus Concert at the Ocean Resort in Atlantic City. His next performance is this Sunday, the 18th, at 3:00 PM at the New Jersey Pack, and Morgan Ten's also gone into the All-State Treble Chorus, and her performance is in February. On this Wednesday, November 14th, the All-School Council is holding a no-shave November fundraiser, where we'll be selling fake mustaches during lunch for $1.
Ah, you're speaking my language! What the... What day is that?
Somebody's gonna be lurking around in the lunchroom.
November 14th. November 14th, I'm so there!
You can donate a real pair, too, you know.
Everybody's gonna be wearing fake mustaches. How much are they?
$1.
Everybody's gonna be wearing them.
Mr. Schoner, you're buying them for everybody?
I'm gonna buy them for everybody! I want a mass picture outside the building with everyone wearing mustaches. It'll be my donation!
Nice. How many students are in the high school there, Nick?
500. I know exactly how.
Where she's going.
510, I think.
And teachers, too, right?
Yeah. On November 15th, there'll be an early dismissal for the high school for parent-teacher conferences from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Cedar Grove High School peer leaders will help direct parents around the high school, and on the same day, the Red Cross Club is hosting a school-wide blood drive. On November 19th, auditions for the spring musical Curtains will be held. Curtains is a murder mystery comedy, it's similar to the Drop Dead play that the drama club had on last year. And on November 27th, there will be a CG tonight in the Black Box Theater at 7:00 PM. We're hoping to bring back the men's night tradition, so we can feature the males in the drama and the music departments. And then at the end of the month, the winter sports teams are gonna begin practicing again.
Wow.
Yeah.
Great, November.
Great, thank you. Alright, now we're moving on to the CGA Pride program, and I'm not quite sure who's presenting, 'cause a bunch of you are here, so come on up! Alright.
So, thank you for having us. Ariel and I, I'm Jackie Zeigling at the middle school, and Ariel's down here at Northend. We are the pride chairs for the Cedar Grove Education Association, and we're just gonna share with you a couple of the events that we are sponsoring this year. So, our committee, so we chair the committee, so we do a lot of the stuff on the county level, as well as we apply for the grants. And then in each building, we have Kristi, Maggie, Danielle, and Kathleen as reps in each building.
And what is Pride? It was formed in the 2006-2007 school year. It's made to promote the bonds between teachers, students, parents, and the whole community. We apply for the grants, and then it's generously provided by the NJEA.
One thing that we did starting last year is we got involved in Pride on the county level, so we go to monthly meetings, and we meet with other towns that participate in Pride within Essex County, so we get to collaborate with what events they do, as well as our big event is the Expo at the Livingston Mall, which we participated in for the first time last year by displaying some artwork. And this year, we're gonna be participating in an essay contest, where some of our students could go on to win prizes, as well as getting all of the buildings involved. So, last year, we were, we just did the artwork at the middle school just to get ourselves started, 'cause you have to commit to tables and everything like that, and they display student work throughout the mall for a full week, and some other districts do performances, so we're just, you know, starting in and getting involved with that.
Yeah, baby steps.
Yeah.
We applied for grants for $10,670 this year, and here's what we plan to do with it. For the fall, we did the CG Waves, you know, with the My Love Memorial, and everything highlighted is something new. We did, this year, we're doing yearbook and play ads, we're doing the Building Bridges Community Roundtable, just to get parents and teachers to communicate about different topics. This year, we're hoping to focus on homework. We also did the South End FSA magnet scholarship, and we also gave North End FSA to sponsor the Apex Fun Run and the Trunk or Tree.
In the winter, we have, the new event that we're gonna be doing this year is we're hoping to do some Board of Ed spotlights, where we'll do it four times. Each building will come and do a spotlight for what's going on in their building, a little bit more than what we put maybe in the superintendent's report. We always do the senior dinner and musical we provide. We actually spend about $2,500, and we bring our seniors in to do the preview of the high school play, which they love to have.
And some support activities are the Treps Spads, which are always popular, it's a great program, the Memorial Middle School Student Faculty Challenge, the Scholarship Night Reception, the Black and Gold sponsorship, and something new that we're doing this year is the Kindergarten Orientation Sponsorship Magnet, so we're hoping to, at kindergarten orientation, give all of the kindergarten students a magnet that says "Class of Whatever", so they can put on the back of their cars, and it's also a nice little gift to get them excited, because, you know, for new kids coming to town, and then every year, then they can drive around and see what year your child...
That's something that my town actually currently does, so we kinda piggybacked off of that, and it's, um, my class, my son is gonna be the class of 2030, so, you know, you go to kindergarten orientation and you're like, "Oh, my goodness," 'cause I graduated from that same high school in 2002, so it was, you know, so did my dad, not in 2002, but, I won't mention his year, but it's kind of a neat, like, community, you know, and now I do it, when I drive around, I'm like, "Oh, it's one of his classmates," you know, things like that, so it kinda gets you in the idea of going to the high school, you know, as a kindergartner. So, those are our events for this year. We always look forward to any ideas, and we get our money from the, from NJEA based on our membership, so, you know, we're just under $11,000 that we love to be able to put back into the community for the kids, so... Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would, you know, thank you very much. Obviously, Cedar Grove Waves, we appreciate everything that you do, and it is vital, because there's a lot of little things with, even with the flags, that people don't realize that it takes a lot of time and a lot of money. I just had a question, how many Pride committees are there? Does every, every school district have a Pride committee?
Most of them in the county.
In the county?
We, we're probably one of the most active, like, I very, one of my jobs I see as the representative of Cedar Grove is to get S120 back from, from the NJEA to our members and to our community, so I make sure, I told them that I had to call me up, to make sure we got every dime back.
We spend it all.
Right.
Yeah.
Not, not everything is as active as we are. I, like, I think we have one of the best programs probably in the state, we've got great people running it, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Fabulous.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Alright, next up, we have our 2017-18 District Park Results.
Funsters beginning, where you going? Giants are on today.
Good night.
Thanks, Jackie, thanks Ariel, thanks Chris.
Now the moment you've all been waiting for. The District Park Scores, Spring 2018. So, every year, we go through this exercise, and it's, it's met by our administrative team with some things to celebrate, and some things to keep us focused on where we need to continue to grow. And so, without stealing too much of Mrs. Barboza's and Mr. Pearson's thunder, let me walk you through the first few slides here. Just as some background, this is the fourth administration of Park. It will be the last, as we know it as Park. More about that a little later. Students, as you know, took it in ELA, in grades 3 through 11, mathematics 3 through 8, at the high school, algebra 1, 2, and geometry. There are some proposed modifications for the spring assessment, let's talk a little bit about that. So, this slide has a lot of information on it, so let me give you a moment to digest it. Here are the topics here. Let's start with the high school assessment component. There's very little changes going on in grades 3 through 8, but when you get to the high school level, there's been a lot of talk about what's, what's happening for even this next assessment in the spring. The proposes, the proposals haven't even been adopted yet, but the state's confident that they will be sometime in December, so what you're hearing is sort of, you know, cutting-edge news here. So, the bottom line is, these recommendations, we believe, will be adopted, and what does that mean? Instead of going and have our students in grades 9, 10, and 11 take the ELA Park Test, it'll only be students in grades 9 and 10, so that's a significant difference. Our juniors probably won't be taking the Park Test in this, in the spring. What else? Well, the end, of course, in terms of mathematics, there won't be three years of test takers, only 9th and 10th graders, so if you're in the, if you're in the Algebra 1, Geometry track, you'll take the algebra test as a 9th grader, and the geometry test as a 10th grader, and if you're in the Geometry-Algebra 2 track, you'll take those two tests, but you will not test if you're a junior. So, that's a significant departure from where we've been the last four years. There's been a lot of discussion about the graduation assessment options for those students that didn't score a 4 or 5 on the Park Assessment. Well, the fact of the matter is, if you're one of those students that sat for the Algebra 1 test and did not score a 4 or 5, Mr. Mangili and his team have you being remediated right now in a zero-period Algebra 1 program. Doing so will afford you the alternate assessment pathways. It'll allow you, number one, to take the test again, and number two, open up these alternate pathways, the ACT, the SAT, the PSAT, the ASVAB, and so on. You must be remediated, as of right now, the state tells us, you must be remediated to gain access to those alternate pathways. And so, Mr. Mangili, doing the fine job that he's doing, is making sure that that's happening. So, let's talk about the test itself. So, here are the levels. I'm sure by now you've seen your child's score reports, levels 1 through 5, right? Not yet meeting, partially approaching, meeting grade level, and exceeding. We have lots of kids meeting and exceeding, and we're excited about that, we'll highlight some of that. And here are the score ranges. We go from 650 to 850. The state is big on the number of tests taken. For us in Cedar Grove, it's not an issue. You know, when Park first rolled out in the Common Core, right, we talked about opt-outs, and parents were writing letters, there were campaigns across the state, hundreds, thousands of kids, their parents were writing letters, "My child's not taking the Park Test." It's not been the case in Cedar Grove. So, the numbers you see here in Language Arts basically reflect our enrollment. The kids that we have enrolled are taking the test. Same in math. Any fluctuations simply have to do with the different numbers of kids in each grade level. You can count the number of opt-outs on one or two fingers, for whatever those reasons are. So, this slide has a lot of information, and it's, it's difficult to read, as I'm seeing now, because the numbers are quite small, so let me just kind of establish the geography, and then I'll toss it over to Janine and Bart. So, what you're seeing here is a comparison of the spring 16, 17, and 18 Park Assessment. And how do we have that? Let's look at the columns first, so we have the grade levels, 3 through 11, and then we have 16, 17, and 18, in each of the five park scoring categories. We just showed you that slide, right? Not yet meeting, partially approaching, meeting, and exceeding. That's how we have it set up. And what you see here are the percentages of students in each grade level that scored in those categories. Make sense? Furthermore, if you look carefully, you'll see that diagonally, I have highlighted numbers in red. What this allows us to do is not only track different students in different grades, but rather, the same students in different grades over a three-year period. So, if you'd indulge me for a moment, looking back at 2016, we had 5 percentage, percent of our 3rd graders score not yet meeting expectations. Well, how did that same group of students do in 4th grade? Well, we're happy to say that they went from 5% to only 1% scoring in that category. The fewer students we have in that category, of course, the better. And lastly, how did they do from 3rd to 4th to 5th grade? 1%. And so on down the line that goes. You can do the same for any other grade level here, in this category, from left to right, going down, and so forth and so on. I think you understand the trend there. We'll have this posted on our website, you'll be able to spend some time, parents at home, you'll see it in color. It's much easier if you spend a few minutes with it, getting, getting to know how things work. So, this is in Language Arts, and this, on the far right, shows you the change in levels 1 and 2, and the change in level 4 and 5. Those are really the two areas the state likes to look at. How are our lowest-performing students growing over three years? And how are our highest-performing students, those that were meeting and exceeding, how did they progress over the last three years' time? Any questions on that? What I'd like to do is now ask Mr. Pearson to come up, he'll walk you through the rest of the Language Arts slides, talk to you about some recommendations and some focus areas, and then we'll go from Mr. Pearson to Mrs. Barboza, who will do the same for mathematics?
As Mike said, there is a lot of information on this chart, and I don't think there's anyone in the room who doesn't like, can appreciate a large chart full of numbers in this case. Now, remember, we're talking diagonally. If I could work this incorrectly? No?
Yes.
Oh, I wanna go back. There we go. There we go, alright. So, what I wanna point out, when you look at something like this, it's, it is overwhelming, and I can say, as Mike, Janine, and I went through this information for over a week, looking at it, it's easy to look past some of the things that really should stand out to us. For example, if you look at 4th grade, I keep forgetting how to do this. No? There we go. Let's see if I can get rid of that. Alright, 4th grade. Looking at exceeding expectations. From 2016 and 17, we see they went from 12% exceeding and exceeding to 30% exceeding, which is a gigantic jump, a big jump by itself, but if you look at from 17 to 18, it went from 8 student, 8% of the students exceeding expectations to 27, which is a pretty big jump in case of, that's in terms of both of our 4th graders, both 4th grades in North End and South End. To break that down a little bit, though the information is not up on this chart, say, take South End. When the students were in grade 3, for students who were meeting and exceeding expectations, at grade 3, there were 69% of them meeting and exceeding. By 4th grade, they were 83% meeting and exceeding, so they went up by 14%. And those are the little victories that I think a chart like this doesn't exactly show, and we have the same kind of growth in North End. If we look at 7th grade, there's been a steady rise in exceeding expectations from 2016 to 2018. If we start here, it is, we started at 10%, so right there. The 5th grade, 10%, 13% to 52%. So, this year, in 2018, they had 52% of their students exceeding expectation, which is, in terms of everything, one of the largest growths that we've had. However, if you look at 52%, you look over here at the meeting expectation, you say, "Why only 28%? Why is only 28% of it?" Because the majority of those students jumped full-on to exceeding expectations. That's an important little piece of information there. Chart like this also doesn't take into consideration individual student and the growth that individual students make, and as a Language Arts teacher for a long time, the students that I see make tremendous jumps, students, inclusion students, especially, like, special ed students in general, just the jumps that those students make, that's the little victories for myself that I wish a chart like this really showed. It does not in this case. We look at the next slide, if I do this correctly. One of these?
Clicker's broken. It's broken.
The one to go to the next one here, that one. Gotcha, alright. Now, this is the district-to-state comparisons, and again, there's a lot going on on this chart. You have the front, if I could let you just take a look at it across the board. Some important things to pick out. Grade 3. There we go. We look at combining the meeting and exceeding expectation range. The state says between, for 3rd grade, between, if I can read my own handwriting here, meeting exceeding, state says we should have 51% of our students meeting or exceeding. We had 72% of our students in 3rd grade meeting and exceeding, which is a 21%, you know, range, 21% average on students meeting and exceeding the average. Same thing in 4th grade. State ranges says they should have 58% of our students meeting and exceeding in 4th grade. We had 82% of our students in 4th grade meeting and exceeding. Again, that's a 24% increase. Grade 7, jump to them. Again, since, and I pick out 4th and 7th again, 'cause this is to show them from the previous chart. The state says they should have 63% of their students meeting and exceeding. We had 80% of our students meeting and exceeding, which is, again, 17% more than what the state would assume that we would do. These are, these are big victories. This does not mean, however, that there's not lots of work to do, and if you, if you look at the way the chart works out, there are grade levels that need a little push, and, you know, that's what the focus will be on for, I guess, the rest of the, not just the rest of the year, but just to make sure everybody's doing everything they can in order to pull those skills out of our students, and sometimes it does get a little tricky. Some of the initiatives that we're gonna be working on, and I think the first two become really the most important. Cross-curricular, excuse me, cross-curricular alignment of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for English Language Arts. I find this to be incredibly important, because in the end, every teacher is a Language Arts teacher, as much as some of them do not want to really admit that. Reading is going on everywhere. The two most, see, like, for myself, and what I know is on Park, are subjects, SOE studies and science. You would think it would be just reading, but there's one nonfiction text, and there's generally two nonfiction texts in all the tests, and they almost are always SOE studies and science. I'd like to have some articulation between the grade levels on how to implement the same kind of ways that we're doing things in Language Arts within the SOE studies classes. It's being done at a 3rd and 4th grade level, and I think we could see the results in what we just looked at, but at a high school level and a middle school level, it gets a little different, and that's where the push is going to really be. Vertical articulation, vertical and horizontal articulation within and between all district schools, something that, not only that I've noticed myself, and I know Janine has as well, but a lot of the teachers have asked us for that as well, which is going to be important. Looking at further analysis of assessment data determined student needs in order to drive instruction. We have a lot of, a lot of data, sometimes too much data to look at. Looking at a chart like we just looked at, the data will get to you if you really start staring at it. Performance Matters gives us a nice little rundown on our data, but we're gonna be digging more into that. Excuse me. Continued implementation of student-centered differentiated instruction in all grade levels. Of course, that goes hand-in-hand with the data. And continued curriculum revision to alignment and professional development for successful implementation of the New Jersey Student Learning Centers in ELA. And as an example of that, in grades K to 4, they do the Common Core Academy, very helpful in terms of pulling those skills together, and also showing how they work throughout different, you know, between SOE studies and science and math, because it's all, works together. Alright, I'm gonna move on to math here. And I'll let Ms. Barboza take it on. I always have to go first before Janine.
I'm always afraid of what kind of performance she's gonna put on.
It's all good, I left my top shoes at home tonight. Good evening, everyone. I have to say that when we sit down and we look at this data, my mind goes a mile a minute, 'cause I'm a super math nerd, and with a statistics background, my perspective is with statistical inference, where you are diving deep and going between the lines of just the numbers. I think any one of us could look at some of the information that we have been provided in terms of the, the raw scores, the raw numbers, and we can see, we can see very clearly, and is this the, ooh, remembered what that was. The thing that stands out to me first is, like, anyone would look at this information and say, "Where are we exceeding expectations and meeting expectations the most?" And it's pretty obvious, in our upper elementary grades, in the beginning of the middle school, And it's pretty obvious, in our upper elementary grades, in the beginning of the middle school, 3 through 5, are where a lot of our strongest, most prominent, in-your-face types of numbers are coming from. And I look at that first, and I say, I'm, I'm happy to see that movement. I'm happy to see that growth, because this is where a lot of our focus has been in the beginning. When I came into this position, I had a big conversation with the admin team, and I said, I think that we need to rebuild from the ground up a little bit. We implemented a new program. We had Go Math in the elementary school, Connected Math that is now in Grade 8 at the middle school, and a lot of our PD training, specifically what Conker Math, has been in the elementary school. And not only are we hearing the results from the teachers, but we're seeing it in the growth of our students going from, for example, 18% to 24% in exceeding expectations. And that's where we're seeing a lot of the changes. If we look diagonally, there are some inconsistencies, there are some ups and downs, and we're considering all of the factors. The cohort of students, the types of problems, and, and, you know, Bart earlier said, I wish there was some other information on this chart. I particularly wish that there was a little bit more information about the test itself coming back, but that's neither here nor there. Something that I wanted to dig deeper in with all of the scores, not just the elementary school and middle school where we're putting our PD, but what's going on in the upper grades. So I said, in looking at Grade 8, the high school, we do have a high percentage of students in meeting expectations, but what's going on with exceeding expectations? I wanted to know where those students fell. And I'll give you a quick example. One of the ranges, let's say for Algebra 1, the range is from 750 to 809. I want to know, are most of our students hanging around in, in the upper third of that range, the middle, the lower third? It's very different to have 10 students at a score of 808 versus, you know, 50 students at a score of 751. It's, it's equivalent to saying, well, you have a B with an 88, but you also have a B with an 82. And that's a big range difference. So when I dove a little deeper into the actual student scores, into alternate data that we all sat around and looked, I found that that was the case, that we have a larger chunk of students skewed to the upper part of the range, which means we're there, we are right there. In fact, I don't remember what grade, I think it might have been Algebra 2, Algebra 1, excuse me. There were seven students who had one point below the meeting expectations. And that's just for one grade. So in digging a little bit deeper, I'm finding that we're almost there, we're right on the edge, and I know the things that we have in place are going to put us over for the following year. If we make some, if we take a look at the state comparisons, again, we have the upper elementary exceeding expectations higher than the state average, and we are not too far off with the other grades. Like I said before, they're, looking at the actual student scores between 2016, 2017, 2018, there are a lot of students moving up into that higher third of the range, which indicates growth, and that's what we want. And we're getting a lot of students in the, I know, I should say this in the previous range. We are getting students moving out of the Level 1, 2 range, and moving up a little bit higher. So, yes, we have PD, and we have new programs, and the shift is moving up, but a bigger question is, well, what are we doing this year? What are we doing right now? We have, excuse me. I'm going to go to this next slide. So, a handful of initiatives, and I'd be more than happy to elaborate a little bit on any one of these that are up here. As math and Common Core has been shifting, our focus in science has shifted as well. We are now in the world of next-generation science standards, where students are doing more, they're investigating, they're discovering, which is exactly where we are with math. It's the whole shift. It's, students are more accountable, to be independent, to communicate, and this is helping them apply the math. In the science classes, they are learning why measurement is important, why precision is important. They're learning the correct units, and that goes hand in hand with measurement and data in our, our math units, which sometimes fall towards the end of the school year. So they're getting more of that practice, just because the next generation, next-generation science standards, specifically the engineering practices, are requiring them to do so. I've talked to the science teachers, and they are seeing how much more coordinate geometry and graphing and lines they are using in the lower grades sooner. As Bart said, vertical and horizontal articulation within and between all school districts, schools. We have regular math department meetings at the high school and the middle school. Something that we did at the recent ed camp is, I put all the math teachers in a room for an hour, for the whole, for grades 5 through 12, and the science teachers as well. We came up with a Google Sheet that fostered some conversation about, what do you feel confident that your students know leaving your classroom? What do you wish they knew walking into your classroom? So there were a lot of specific questions that were put on the table. I made it as structured as possible, and there was an enormous amount of input that is allowing us to move even forward, even, even further with these conversations. We're going to hope to do another one in, in January. Further analysis of assessment data, besides Performance Matters and Think Central, the program that goes with, with Go Math, we are moving a little bit further with Mobi Max in grades K-8. We have a lot of upgrades this year, which will allow the teachers to use pinpoint assessments, really diagnose students, to the point where they're pinpointing the standard. It's not just, okay, you ended up with an 80% at the end of this test. It will break down all the information, and it goes with the student from year to year, so we can really see growth over a four-year period, and not just from year to year. We have continued professional development to address problem-solving skills. Conker Math specifically. Last year and this year, K-5 really focused in on differentiation and assessment. And continued support for the teachers who are instructing our students with the Connected Math program at the middle school. Our science teachers are, have already gone to Prism, Raridan Valley. We've brought consultancies in for next-generation science standards, and math, like I said, is a big component of that. We have new approaches to open-ended problems, not just from the workshops. I've sat with teams, I did an ed camp in October to talk about different approaches that we can use, not in addition, not something new, but how to change our approaches so that there's less anxiety, so that students have more confidence going into word problems. Because very often, especially at Park, a student will sit down to an open-ended question and say, I don't know where to begin. So one of my goals with the teachers this year is, is really try to address that. Curricular revisions and evidence statement analysis in grades 8 through 10, excuse me, 8 through 11, in Algebra 1, Geometry Algebra 2 specifically. We have already sat down, and we looked at the evidence statements to see which standards correlate to which questions. And we've either shifted our focus, made a couple changes with the, the order of units during the year, or we decided to weed out some unnecessary items and make room for opportunities to go a little bit deeper. I mentioned a couple lines before that we have Mobi Max in K-8. So what are we doing at the high school? This year especially, our teachers are using Desmos, which is an online graphing program that allows for investigation and a lot of conversation, that focuses in on concept over turning our students into procedural robots, which sometimes that can happen with algebra-based subjects. But there's a lot of investigation in our high school. A lot of teachers are using the free programs available through Khan Academy, which, like Mobi Max, diagnoses students' standards, it gives them a lot of, gives the teachers assessment data back so that they could further, they could guide their instruction and also their homework assignments. A lot of the teachers, especially in the upper grades, are finding it very useful. And I think pretty soon, all of our high school teachers are going to be using that. And the third program that we're experimenting a little bit with this year is called Geogebra, which is another program that allows students to do Park-like problems online, including dropdown menus. And it's not just for graphing like Desmos is, but it's geometry. So, we are exploring, we're learning, we are communicating a lot more this year, and I'm looking forward to bringing more focus and attention to the things that, that we need.
Any questions? A lot of data.
A lot of numbers.
In this, so, when you were talking about the state stop, not stopping park, modifying park?
Changing its name.
Changing its name. It's supposed to be in the spring.
Right.
And 11, the juniors won't be.
Great.
Okay.
You still don't have to take the test.
No, I know. Okay.
I would have. Phil?
Yes.
Me too.
Those are just proposals, but we anticipate them coming through.
Right. With the new administration.
Yes.
And all of this will be on our district website, if it's not already, or?
Not already.
Okay.
Be there tomorrow.
Soonish. All right. Fantastic. Well, thank you. We know this is a lot of work, and we appreciate it, and it's a lot more than just the numbers. It's what's beneath the numbers, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate your continued hard work to get us to the next level, so. And we see it. I mean, we see it year after year. I mean, you know, maybe kind of slow progression, but we're definitely seeing it, so.
And I think the great thing is, we're, we're trying new things, we're not afraid to try new things to get it to work.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, from sitting on here seven years ago versus, you know, what we're doing now, we're taking steps. We're actually doing, I mean, not that we weren't doing anything, but I feel like it's a little more concrete, it's a little more tangible. You know, what we're looking at right now, you know, okay, we are, you know, going to do this, we're using this program, we're going to assess it using this way. And I, I feel like we, you know, didn't necessarily do as much of that, you know, back then, so.
And just looking at this, I mean, the, the programs that we're starting at a younger age look like it's really digging in, so we're going to start to see the numbers following through, I'm assuming, because we are seeing that in the 3rd and 4th. I mean, it's pretty amazing in the elementary school, so now that we're starting that, it's going to just pull the kids all the way through, because the foundation's there to build and build and build.
I think the key is everybody being on board with the building as the kids progress, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
They look like they're on board for something.
It's a lot of work.
They're smiling.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Before we move on, that's it for presentations, right? We're all, presentation out?
Do a song?
I was going to say, song, dance, or something.
I just want to compliment you on the play. It was fantastic. It was really a, you know, it was definitely out of the box, bringing something different out of the box, and I think everyone worked really hard to pull it off. And congratulations on that.
It was a lot of work.
Yeah. And when you step out of the box and do something a little different, you know, it requires more work, not that.
It's been a really cool, interesting fall, and like, starting my freshman year, we did Odd Couple, which is a comedy. Then we did Charlotte's Web, which was children's show, Drop Dead, which was a comedy, like a farce. And then we went right to the show, which has been a really interesting progression of, like, the drama department.
Right. Yes.
Very nice.
Yes.
All right, so before we move on to yeses and eyes and all that other business.
Which will take five minutes.
It might, but if anyone wants to go, just because I know.
It'll take five minutes. I'm putting her on notice now.
Or you can just go, because it's late. It's really fine. Same with you, Nick, if you want to, honestly.
Probably been here all day.
Wow, look at you guys, you're already.
All right. All right. All right. Angela, put the clock on.
All right.
8:30, we're out.
Glasses on, so I can see a little better. Be a little faster. All right, moving on.
Okay.
From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, enter minutes. Can I have a motion for B-1 through B-4?
So moved.
Second.
B-1 is a motion to approve the Public and Executive Minutes from October 16. B-2 is a motion to approve the Budgetary Transfers for the month of October. B-3 is a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report for the months of August and September. And B-4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's Certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Business, can I have a motion for B-5 through B-10?
So moved.
Second.
B-5 is a motion to incorporate the following into the Cedar Grove Board of Education's 2018-19 Board Goals, and they include long-range strategic planning, the referendum, communication, and finances. B-6 is a motion to accept the donated services of Nikki Francis, guest speaker from the Cedar Grove Municipal Alliance. B-7 is a motion to approve the third quarter unemployment insurance for the amount listed. B-8 is a motion to approve the following for submission of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for the 18-19 school year. B-9 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Dylan Tolleson, Montclair State University student, and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. And B-10 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Maribella Productions and the Cedar Grove Board of Ed. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under, from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under person now, can I have a motion for S-1 through S-21?
So moved.
Second.
S-1 is a motion to affirm the Superintendent's Report on Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying from October 16. S-2 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S-3 is a motion to approve Regina Purcell, substitute custodian at the rate listed. S-4 is a motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of Lester Kronk, Memorial Middle School Knight Custodian. S-5 is a motion to approve the corrected stipend amounts for Bruno Mayoria for the 18-19 school year. S-6 is a motion to rescind Sabrina Zunick, North End paraprofessional, effective January 1, 2019. S-7 is a motion to approve Sabrina Zunick, Business Office Secretary/Bookkeeper, accounts payable, 12-month employee, at the rate listed. S-8 is a motion to approve Deanne Grossman for Pathways Instruction. S-9 is a motion to rescind Ryan Corbusaro from the Assistant Wrestling Coach position. S-10 is a motion to retroactively approve Caitlin Riley and Janine Barboza as makeup consultants. S-11 is a motion to approve the following coaches for the 18-19 school year. S-12 is a motion to retroactively approve Dave Costner for the 20 hours of curriculum writing for the Engineering Robotics. S-13 is a motion to approve the following rate per hour for Giuseppe Frequenza, retroactive from September 1. S-14 is a motion to approve the following increase to 50 cents per hour for full-time and substitute lunch aids. S-15 is a motion to approve on second reading the CGA Spring Music Trip Proposal to Vermont. S-16 is a motion to approve a sixth class for Michelle Rack. S-17 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S-18 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers. S-19 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S-20 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. And S-21 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion?
I don't remember what the first one was.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Contracts, can I have a motion for S-22?
So moved.
Second.
No, for someone. Motion to approve, S-22 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as directed, or as recommended by the Director of Special Services. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items, on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none. Announcement of future meetings, November 20th, it's a meeting, but it's not quite a meeting. Mr. Fetterman, you want to kind of explain a little bit on what we're doing on the 20th? Because we're taking it on the road.
We're taking it on the road. We'll be in Mr. Menj
It's a meeting, but it's not quite a meeting. Mr. Fetterman, you want to kind of explain a little bit on what we're doing on the 20th? Because we're taking it on the road.
We're taking it on the road. We'll be in Mr. Mangilli's house in the CGHS cafeteria.
Are you serving cake?
Six thirty.
Donuts, coffee, some cookies. Mr. Mangilli, tell.
What do they think?
Who do they think?
They think that we will not...
See, we had no doubt.
Demi's a fine meal, dear.
Mr. Mangilli, I'll follow in the sort. I should have shared with them that you will be taking care of that. It's my fault.
We should have had the pride sponsor something, is what we should have done, right? While they were here, have them kick in a couple bucks.
There will be light. Mr. Mangilli has the refreshments covered.
Exactly. We just need a couple bucks.
And coffee and...
Good coffee, or?
Awesome.
Just asking.
But more importantly, there'll be strategic planning, right? More importantly, there'll be strategic planning.
And that's the most important part of all of it.
That's right. We're inviting the community, pre-K through 12 and otherwise, to come join us to launch our strategic planning process. Dr. Tracy Severins, retired supervisor, principal superintendent, will be facilitating the discussion. We truly invite all of you to join us at the high school in the cafeteria. Well, it'll be an active session. We will be working and thinking and exchanging ideas. We look forward to it. CU, November 20th, six thirty, at the high school.
At the high school.
Good job. All right, just one more thing. I just want to congratulate our three board members who ran uncontested landslide victories. Michelle Miga for the one-year position.
Yes.
Thank you.
One year for now, right? And then Nicole DiChiara, who will be serving her first official three-year term, although I feel like you've been here forever.
Forever.
Exactly.
It feels like three years.
Right. And, and Mr. Pavulovich, who is in his sec, will be in his second...
Cannot believe this, three years went by.
I know. Once you're here, you can't, you can't leave. Exactly. So we're very excited to have you working with us and obviously for your dedication, because it's got to be something, right? All this. We appreciate that.
It's the good coffee at the high school.
It is, it is. That's exactly what it is. So thanks again and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you. Cheers.
Thank you. All right, any further, anything?
Nope.
No, all right.[1769.41]